Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. And as he said, you know, we thank you guys for all the work you do. I know that Election Day is kind of the big part, but there's a lot of work building up to it. I think you are, if not the hardest working, one of the hardest working groups of people in the -- volunteers in the city, and really thank you for that. Jesse, I'm just curious, maybe you can answer, or you, Marilyn. How is this compared to previous years? It seemed with the early voting that it would give a smoother Election Day?
Well, as you know, this election drew a lot of attention, so at times there were more members of the press than voters here even. It was, there was a lot going on on Election Day. I think everything went very smoothly, and early voting probably did help. We would love to have seen more turnout and could have handled it, but in a way, we were a little bit blessed with not having a large turnout because of the press, because of the visitors we had, because of the attention, and because of the same-day registration, which was wonderful, but it kept Irma and me busy the whole time. So, so things went very smoothly, but it was packed with, with action.
We, Jesse received in the middle of the afternoon, I believe it was, a call from the US Department of State asking if they could bring a busload of 21 visitors, each from a different country, to look at election processes. So during the middle of the election, we were given tours of the election.
That's great, but it all ran smooth. I mean, it's a testimony to the preparation you did and the good work that you did, that everything ran smoothly. I didn't receive one complaint this year, and that's, maybe there were some, but it was unusual for me not to hear from anyone who was frustrated with something to do with the election. So, I thank you.
Good, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Mail is here but across the hall in another meeting.
I will call him and let him know.
And so, I think at this point, if we can go to the Board of Elections and you can present what you've got, and welcome to Marilyn Abbott.
I'm live. I'm Marilyn Abbott. I'm chairman of the Board of Elections, and we have the final results from last night's election. The, to explain the tables, we gave you the handout that has notes on it. The first note is just to explain the tables, that when we count the voters in Tacoma Park, we do not include the inactive voters listed on the county. We share our, we share our poll book from the state. That poll book includes all voters registered, active and inactive. We do not count the inactive on our totals. Just two notes from the election. In Ward Four, Eric Mendoza withdrew from the contest after ballots were printed. Therefore, his name still remained on the ballot. We had a notice posted within the voting booths to that effect. Also, Elizabeth Forbes Wallace registered as a write-in candidate for the office of mayor. Her name was posted in the voting booth also as having registered. She received 63 write-in votes. The break-in for these votes by Ward is not available at this time, which we regret. We do have, we will have those available. The election was conducted using Optical Scan System for Election Systems and Software Incorporated. They provided onsite technical support for us, and we were quite grateful for that. The e-poll books, as usual, were leased from Montgomery County Board of Elections. They cooperated with us with updating our information on our voters through October 26th, so we had pretty accurate poll book to use. In order to be elected with our instant runoff voting, a candidate must receive a majority of valid votes. All ballots offered the opportunity to rank candidates, including write-ins, in all the contests. One candidate received a majority of first choices in the first round, so we did not have to go to instant runoffing, instant runoff. Early voting seemed to get popular each year, or each time. This year, the early voting built from the first day through the last day of early voting being offered. On October 30th, it was just 12 people used it. By Sunday, November 3rd, we had 78 people who came in for early voting. This was our first election in which 16- and 17-year-old residents could vote. As of October 23rd, with the cutoff from the county updates of the poll book, 93 16- and 17-year-olds in our area had registered, or were registered. After that cutoff, the city registered an additional 41 16- and 17-year-olds.
Additional 41?
So, we had 134 16- and 17-year-olds registered to vote. I, we do have the number on how many of those citizens voted. I just, I just don't see it here. I believe it was 68, or, it should be in the report, if not, we'll report it separately. But I do believe it was 68 total on the 16- and 17-year-olds voting.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
It was 59.
Fifty-nine. Okay. And then, our same-day registrations included, this was very popular, and it helped us. It helped us streamline some of our procedures. We did not have any provisional votes this year, so every person who came in to vote knew when they left that their vote was going to be counted. It took us a bit, and I thank Jesse, and I thank the rest of the board to come up to make sure we had procedures that incorporated this, but the same-day voter registration did streamline, and I think was something that the citizens liked. A total of 67 citizens, or US citizens, registered for same-day, and 27 non-citizens registered on Election Day. And as I said, there were no provisional votes this year. Everybody was able to be incorporated within the rules from Montgomery County and within our rules to cast a ballot and know their ballot counted. We've attached the ward breakouts that the, I know the council and the mayor like to see, and are available to provide further breakouts and different information, additional information. We've also included the write-in votes, but the first choice written in only, if, you know, the, if a write-in was the first choice on the ballot, is all that we've included. That concludes what I was going to present, if you all have questions. I do have one more thing. I enjoyed working yesterday. I enjoyed working with the city and the staff, and I enjoyed working with the fellow judges and my fellow members of the board. So, that concludes my remarks.
Thanks for the report, and thanks to all the members of the Board of Elections who helped with this. I know it can be a long day, and I know a number of you were here for a good bit today as well, going through and verifying everything, and we really appreciate all your hard work on this. So, thanks very much, and thanks for the report. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the report. And as he said, you know, we thank you guys for all the work you do. I know that Election Day is kind of the big part, but there's a lot of work building up to it. I think you are, if not the hardest working, one of the hardest working groups of people in the, volunteers in the city, and really thank you for that. Jesse, I, just curious, maybe you can answer, or you, Marilyn. How is this compared to previous years? It seemed with the early voting that it would give a smoother Election Day?
Well, as you know, this election drew a lot of attention, so at times, there were more members of the press than voters here even. It was, there was a lot going on on Election Day. I think everything went very smoothly, and early voting probably did help. We would love to have seen more turnout and could have handled it, but in a way, we were a little bit blessed with not having a large turnout because of the press, because of the visitors we had, because of the attention, and because of the same-day registration, which was wonderful, but it kept Irma and me busy the whole time. So, so things went very smoothly, but it was packed with, with action.
We, Jesse received in the middle of the afternoon, I believe it was, a call from the US Department of State, asking if they could bring a busload of 21 visitors, each from a different country, to look at election processes. So during the middle of the election, we were given tours of the election.
That's great, but it, but it all ran smooth. I mean, it's a testimony to the preparation you did and the, and the good work that you did, that it, that everything ran smoothly. I didn't receive one complaint this year, and that's, maybe there were some, but that it was unusual for me not to hear from anyone who was frustrated with something to do with the election. So, I thank you.
Good, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say, it was, it was pretty obvious that you all were running a very smooth operation. It was from the outside to going inside to do the vote, and, and just, just, just the way you all handled the whole, the whole presentation was really, really exciting. And as I said to you, your marketing plan is probably as exciting a marketing plan, and I know it's just papers about how to do, put together a project, but it's as exciting a marketing plan as I've ever seen, and one that, that I think we ought to pick up and, don't copyright it. We're going to pick it up and suggest that other people use it, because it was so good. And you, you all did many, many, many of the things you had written down on the papers. It was very impressive. Everybody was so gracious and excellent, especially when you couldn't find my, my name in the voter polls. I have, I'm a woman of many names, so we never went to Mary until Jesse got a hold of us, so, thank you so much, and thank you for all, thank you for all the hard work, because like Councilwoman Siemens says, I know it just wasn't yesterday. I mean, even when we were doing the absentee ballots, notice I say "we," that was me and the mouse in my pocket, you all were doing the absentee ballots. Everybody was cleaning up. There wasn't anybody just hanging out. If they were, they were hanging out someplace else, but they were all moving around, doing what they had to do to get, to get done.
Thank you.
And it's pretty darn impressive, and there wasn't anybody driving them. They just did what they had to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, did you actually vote for yourself, given the difficulty with names?
Yes, I did.
Councilmember Schultz.
Couple of questions. On the write-in votes, I think I want to make it clear that the names of the various people on that last page, those, those are not the names of the people who voted. Those are the names of the people that somebody thought should be elected.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I know that. I wanted to make it clear to anybody who looks at this information. The other, a couple, another question is, what is the definition of an inactive voter?
And I believe we had two people who came in and voted who had actually moved to Rockville. And we had to explain, you were now in Rockville, not Tacoma Park. So there is some of that cleanup that takes place. It's not a lot, but some, and I'll let Jesse address whether it might be systematic.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know about that, if you don't mind.
I, I think other councilmembers may know this as well, better than I do even, but I don't think there's any purging. There's no purging of Maryland's voter list. People are moved to inactive status.
That's, that's basically it.
But there, there are a number of, of ways that the county, that the state finds out that people should be removed. For instance, if a, if a voter registers in another state, the state is supposed to notify Maryland that they've registered there. A deceased person usually gets pulled from the roll because the, the death notices, deaths, deaths get reported.
I see.
What's the third thing? Felons who lose their voting rights. That also gets reported so that those, they're removed from the rolls.
Is there any role that we can play? Because by virtue of being on the city council, we tend to know people in our wards and when they've moved away or stuff, that we can help? Or is that just like, it's not, it's outside the official process?
I don't know. I see Mr. Siemens shaking his head.
Right, I've discussed that with the Board of Elections, and they feel the potential conflict of interest surpasses the benefit that could be realized.
Yeah, I, I think so. That's, yeah, that would be my guess as well. Okay. Trying to think if there was any other comments or questions that I had. I don't think so. So thank you so much. I, I concur. You guys worked long hours and you are, you know, you don't have room for error. You've got to, perfection is, is the goal. It's not horseshoes, where you can get close and say, hey, we did pretty good. So I just admire the, the, the time and the effort and the dedication and the accuracy of the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. Marilyn, I want to thank you, the Board of Elections, for all the hard work that you guys put in on Election Day, and thank you for the report. When you guys provide us a breakdown of the actual voters for each ward, is there any way that you can give us the times that people voted, whether or not people, there were more people that voted in the morning, say, than voted in the evening? Is that data available?
I don't know.
It is recorded. I can see if we can, my guess is we can access that, that information. I'll have to request it, but we will get the voter history, but I could request that additional information. I believe I could get it.
And can you tell who, or who registered on the day of election?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have that. We just have to, yes, I have all that.
You can give that to us.
It's just there wasn't time to, to gather that information for this report, but I, I have that, I know that, yes.
Great, thank you. And I would like to give a special thanks to Robin Schaefer and all the hard work that you have given the Board of Elections. The city will miss you. Thank you.
That was a new light.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I forgot a little bit. I'm looking at a hundred and thirty-four sixteen and seventeen-year-olds registered to vote. That's a pretty good number, I think. What do you all think? You think that's, that it's a good number, or we could have done better than that? Well, you can always do a little bit better.
I think the important part of the number is how many voted.
Yeah.
Because that, that's a good number, I think.
Yeah. And do, do we know how many voted, or?
Fifty-nine.
Fifteen, okay.
Fifty-nine sixteen and seventeen-year-olds.
And then the day of, we had sixty-four citizens and twenty-seven non-citizens registered. That's a lot of folks, I think. The fact that we, that you, that the election board opened up, or you, or whoever it is, opened up the registration to the day of is pretty, pretty exciting stuff. Let's see, early voting also by date, pretty, pretty, pretty heady stuff, you know? That was a lot. If we, we hadn't had that, I, I don't know that we would have had as many folks vote as, as we did. I, I thought the number, the bottom line, even though it wasn't a huge number, was pretty, pretty huge, based on everybody was running on their own for the most part. So I, like I said, great job, and, you know, even I understood how to make the little machine work. You got to color in and then go put it in the eating machine upside down. So that, that's very good. If I understood it, anybody can understand it.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on something that Councilmember Daniels Cohen was talking about, the non-US citizens, the fact that we had so many registrations this year. I found that the increase of the voting age, or decrease of the voting age to sixteen and seventeen-year-olds was actually beneficial for me. As you know, I have many new immigrants to my ward in Ward Four, and I found it in talking with them, it was easier to explain that they were eligible to vote and they could register to vote because of the lowering of the voting age. Both the publicity that that got and the fact that I could use that as another example, they didn't think I was lying to them, or that they were going to get in trouble. They, they realized that we do have different rules than the state, and so they were more willing to consider registering. So I think that was a benefit, another collateral benefit of having the lower voting age. Just one question on the youth vote. Are we going to get a breakdown by ward on the youth vote? Okay, thank you.
And we have a lot of ways we can parse that information, by particular, even which days early voting, election, in which wards and everything.
Yeah, I'm just curious about overall, the sixteen, seventeen-year-old votes in the ward.
I did a quick check. It's, it's Ward One, Two, and Three. You may not be surprised to, to learn that that's where those young voters are.
Okay. We'll see what happens next year. Next election.
Thank you. I pushed in, sorry. I can't say, I didn't hear because of the hearing aids. I don't know how many of you all were able to speak to any of the sixteen or seventeen-year-olds that actually registered and voted, but I got a chance to talk to a couple of them, and I saw the YouTube. It brought tears to my eyes because of how they felt, and I just, I was just so thrilled. Just talking to them one-on-one was, was really exciting. And I, I know we had a lot of controversy about whether we should go ahead and do that, and we did it, and I, I think it was, obviously, I of course think it was a positive thing, but it was truly an exciting experience. I don't know if you all saw the YouTube. I don't, I think Jesse put it out, maybe. I, I don't know. I know I saw it of the young, the first young woman who voted, and she was just so articulate and thrilled and touched and excited about having, having the chance to actually cast a vote, even though it was for only one person, but she, you know, she was really thrilled about it, so. It was really an important decision we made. Thank you.
I'll just add one question. I noticed in looking at the registered voter totals for the wards, that Ward Three has a really low number that surprises me, and I looked at Ward Two, and it says it has three thousand two hundred and thirty-one registered voters, when in fact, there's six wards in the city and there's less than eighteen thousand people, so there should be less than three thousand people in that ward. So I think something is off there.
Yeah, I, I looked at that number too, and I, it's confusing me as well. We need to, I, I need to confirm that. It's probably, there very well may be a mistake. I'll, I'll be revising this document.
Because if these numbers are correct, the percentage of voters voting in Ward Three would be abnormally high.
Yeah, it is, there's an oddity.
Okay. Again, thank you all for your hard work, and is there anything else that you or the clerk needs to add?
I was just going to add that we are going to meet, the board's going to meet next week and is going to do our analysis of what went right, what went wrong. We did try using closers this year, and I think we'll be able to more effectively use them in the future, and I think between us, we come up with ideas where we might be able to shorten that time between closing of the election and being able to produce results. But it was.
Not bad.
It wasn't bad.
Oh, well, maybe we'll do anything different.
It wasn't bad at all.
And I, and I know it's, it's not that many years that we've had a Board of Elections. I don't remember exactly how many years, but it's like maybe six, somewhere in there?
Yeah.
And before that, we didn't have a Board of Elections, and so it's very helpful that you all are there and looking at things year-round and providing advice on how to, how to best do this. And the clerk had a question or comment?
Two things. I guess one thing, that you'll notice there are blanks in this report. I, I need a little more time to fill in. There, I, there's more information in terms of percentages and voter turnout that's not here, that, that should be here. It's not by ward and so on. We have other information to provide by ward.
Is, is there any reason to consider having the certification of the election happen on Thursday instead of a Wednesday in the future?
You know, it wouldn't be a bad thing, I have to tell you. But, you know, it's, it's just the, pointing together some of the numbers, because, because of the additional checks and balances that we do.
And plus, you have to, you have a short day. I mean, you got, you were up late last night.
Yeah. Right, right, yeah. And I, I don't think very well the day after the election. I just don't. I'm just really stupid today.
So it might be worth considering.
Maybe.
Okay. Thank you all very much. And that's the only business we have this evening, so we're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you.